Can everyone please rise and join me in the pledge of allegiance?
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America, and to the republic for which it stands, one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Good evening. Tonight is Wednesday, April 24th. It's a little after 7:30. We just came from executive session where we discussed police negotiations, among other things. All right, we're gonna, we're gonna go a little bit out of order here. As much as I think everybody here wants to hear about our budget, and see our budget get approved, I think we'll wait until later to do that, because I have a feeling that's really not what everyone's here is about. I considered making everyone sit through it, just so you could see the process, but, but I'm not into torture. No, I'm just kidding. It's actually a great process that we've, that we're very excited about. And I will, we will move into other items, but while everyone's here, I am going to take the opportunity to thank Chris, and Trish LaPree, and everyone else who was involved in the budget, and our budget sessions, because it, it really, you know, shows how much thought, how much effort goes into this on an annual basis, to keep the village solvent, to make it so that we have very low stress ratings year after year, we stay within the tax cap year after year, while still providing the level of services that the residents of the Village of Rybrook have come to expect. So I am going to say thank you to, to Chris and Trish while you're here. I am gonna subject you to that. So, we're gonna move on to Resolution Number Two, considering approving SEACR lead agency and introduction of site plan and zoning text amendment application for 975 Anderson Hill Road.
Whereas the Board of Trustees is in receipt of a petition submitted by Coen Purchase Building Company as the applicant and owner of the property located at 975 Anderson Hill Road, consisting of approximately 84 acres in the planned unit development zoning district on Anderson Hill Road, and also in the airport zone, airport zoning district, for an amendment to the zoning code of the Village of Rybrook pursuant to the code, and whereas the property is located at the for, the location of the former Doral Arrowood Conference, Hotel and Conference Center, and whereas the purpose of the requested text amendments to the zoning code concerning the PUD is to allow redevelopment of the property to include, one, a new lodge that contains a hotel and conference center, approximately 220 hotel rooms, residential units, 40 units, ballrooms, restaurants, and recreation and other facilities; two, a separate multifamily residential building, including affordable units; and three, a wellness center and medical office building that would also contain workforce units, together with related amenities, landscaping, parking, and other site improvements; and whereas a concept plan that rendered elevations for the proposed development had been submitted with a zoning petition; and whereas the Board of Trustees is the approval authority for the zoning petition, PUD concept plan, PUD site plan, PUD subdivision, and tree removal permit; and whereas, as described in the full environmental assessment form submitted with the zoning petition, the proposed action includes the requested text amendments to the zoning code and the redevelopment of the property as described and summarized therein; and whereas proposed action is a Type 1 action pursuant to SEACR; and whereas the applicant has submitted a draft scoping document for the preparation of a draft environmental impact statement for review and acceptance by the lead agency pursuant to SEACR. Now therefore be resolved that the Board of Trustees refers the zoning petition to the Rybrook Planning Board for an advisory report and recommendation; and be further resolved the Board of Trustees directs that pursuant to general municipal law, the applicant shall be referred to, the application shall be referred to the County Department of Planning for comment no less than 30 days prior to the public hearing concerning the application; and be further resolved the Board of Trustees authorize the circulation of the notice of intent to declare itself lead agency to all known, involved, and interested agencies, notifying them that the Board of Trustees intends to serve as lead agency for the purpose of conducting coordinated review of the potential environmental impacts of the project under SEACR; and be further resolved the Board of Trustees hereby authorizes the circulation of a draft DEIS scoping document as prepared and submitted by the applicant to all known, interested, and involved agencies pursuant to SEACR regulations; and be it further resolved that, to provide an opportunity for public participation in the scoping process, the Board of Trustees hereby schedules a public hearing on the draft DEIS scoping document for Tuesday, May 28th at 7:30 PM, Village Hall, Rybrook, New York, here in this room. Thank you.
Thank you, Chris. Can I have a motion and second, please? So, this is the beginning of a very long process, and I think there's a lot of steps being detailed in this resolution. And perhaps we can get a little summary of the actions that are being taken through this resolution, and, and really what this means, and, and what this is the beginning of the process of.
Great. You like, so maybe Jennifer, Greg, can you mind taking some of that? Before we do that, and we just want to make sure the board, we, the board is aware, the, the public's aware, we want to keep this a very transparent and open process. We have a place on our webpage under, if you, in the middle it says Development Projects, and all applications that we get, all documents we come, even comments that come in from residents or HOAs, we put everything right into one folder under the project listed for 975 Anderson Hill Road. You know, we want people to all be aware, it's all listed, and we, we're gonna, we keep in order with the most recent at the top, with the dates starting off with the dates. So, everyone can always see what gets submitted and what point in time.
Okay. So, as the mayor mentioned, this is really the kickoff event, right? So, the precursor to that was, there was a sketch plan review before the Board of Trustees back in December, December 12th. So anybody that wants to review that video, that's available on the village's website. And there's a full presentation there. I know the applicants are here tonight and available to, to give sort of an abbreviated presentation as well, but the application that's been submitted is for the redevelopment of the, what we know as the Doral Arrowood Site at 975 Anderson Hill Road. And the application involves a request to adjust some of the zoning text in your current zoning code. So it already is zoned as a PUD, so there's no, typically there would be a request to rezone the property to a PUD. That's already been done for, for the previous development. So zoning text amendments, concept plan under your PUD, and, and site plan with a possible subdivision. There'll also be approvals required from the planning board for steep slopes and wetland permit. For the environmental review of the application, which is part of what's being kicked off tonight, what you're doing is you're authorizing circulation of your notice of intent to declare yourselves lead agency. So, for Type 1 actions under SEACR, which are those that are more likely than not to, to involve one or more significant adverse environmental impacts, there has to be a lead agency. And what you're doing is saying, "We want to be the lead agency. We want to be the ones in charge of the environmental review of this project." And you're gonna circulate that notice to all of the other agencies, including the planning board, Westchester County Department of Health, New York State DEC, any other state or local agency that has any kind of approval authority over the project. You'll circulate that notice to them, let them know you're intent to be lead agency. They'll have 30 days to object or consent. After 30 days, if you don't receive any objections, you become lead agency. The other part of what's being authorized tonight is the circulation of the draft scoping document that's been submitted by the applicant. So, more often than not, when an application is presented, first you have to make a determination of significance, meaning you would decide whether there's one or more significant adverse environmental impacts. Here, the applicant is coming to you and saying, "We're submitting to that process. We, we acknowledge that there may be one or more significant adverse environmental impacts. Here's our draft scoping document to start the preparation of a draft environmental impact statement." So that scoping document is basically the table of contents for the draft environmental impact statement. So that's an important document to read and understand, and make sure that everything that you want to be studied, that you think is relevant to be studied, is in that document. So that document will also be circulated to all of those agencies that are involved in the project. The other thing that this resolution has a lot of prongs. The other thing that this resolution tonight does is it schedules a, basically a public hearing on that scoping document. So not only will you get comments potentially from other agencies, and your own staff and consultants, but you're putting notice out to the public that the public has an opportunity to come to a meeting and comment on that draft scoping document, and either give their comments in person or in writing to the board. Then, once we have all the comments, there'll be a final scoping document that's, that's prepared, that you can then adopt, and then the applicant is off to the races to prepare the environmental impact statement.
And that'll be a gap in time. That can take time for the applicant, then to address all the issues that are in the scoping document.
Right. So, right, there will be, that, that process does take some time to prepare the environmental impact statement. That then gets submitted to your board for you to review, and determine that it has met all of the requirements of the scoping document. There's then another public hearing on that environmental impact statement. After that public hearing, the applicant then has to go back and respond in writing to all of the comments on the draft environmental impact statement. When they respond to all those comments, that's in what's called a final environmental impact statement. That also gets submitted to your board to determine that it's adequate and complete. And then we end up with the finding statement is the last process in the SEACR review. And that's the culmination of the review, where you make your assessment as to whether or not the significant impacts have been mitigated to the maximum extent practicable. So that was probably a very long summary of what you were looking for for tonight, but... That's the general process.
The key points of this resolution currently, which is to send some of these documents to the planning board for their review and comment, to circulate the intent for the village board to be lead agency in this process, and also to set the public hearing for the scoping document. And again, I would reiterate what Chris has said, what Chris said, and Jennifer said, which is that this, like any other process that we've been through like this with, with the village, we are very transparent. All of these documents are available on the village's website for the public to review at any time. And that as things are received, as documents and comments are received, those all end up on there as well. So, any questions or comments from the board?
Let's continue.
Yeah, and I think, you know, as we said, you know, there will, there will be time for the public to review the scoping document. There's time for this board to review the scoping document prior to the public hearing on that, which I believe we said was May 28th.
Second meeting in May.
Yeah, second meeting in May. So that gives quite a bit of time for us to review that document. And again, that's serving as the outline for what direction the EIS will take. Yeah, sure, please. And does the applicant have anything that you want to present, say?
Thanks. Hi, I'm Charles Coen, and thank you so much for allowing us to be here tonight with you and to kick off the beginning of a long process for a great project. We've shared this with you before. We won't be too long, but we'll just go through the highlights. So the TVs are on?
Um, Jason, I don't think they can hear him at home.
Oh, really? I'm assuming the microphone's on?
I don't hear it. It's not loud.
Mics are on.
That, that one.
His, his. Or he's not speaking into it.
If you could speak directly into the mic, that'd be very helpful. Perfect.
Yeah. Yeah, I think viewers at home are having a little trouble hearing, so we gotta make sure to speak into the mic.
No, we live in a fast time. So, as we, as was mentioned before, we have 91 acres, 84 acres in, in New York State. The rest is in Connecticut, which is not part of the development plan. A total of 220 hotel rooms, which includes wellness hotel rooms, as well as, included in the 220 is 75 conference center rooms. There are a total of 115 residences, 40 residences in the hotel property, and next door to the west is the multifamily apartment house. There are a little under 1,400 parking spaces. There's a wellness center, medical office building, and conference center, and various amenities, restaurants, ballrooms, and tennis courts, pickleball, hiking trails. The golf course will be turned into a wellness retreat, hiking, jogging, meditating. This is a slide of the existing location, of the overall site, including Doral Greens, and the, next slide, is the reconfiguration. We're moving the hotel property down towards the pond to the west. The plan is to enlarge that, make it more of a water feature, looking more at the trees and the Adirondack style. And, and that's really the architectural connection to what we want to do. So this is a shot from the other side of the small lake that we want to create to give you an idea of the, the scope of the project. And that's a little lake house in front. This is the entry. We're looking down into the entry for the arrival. The next slide is the conference center, which is to the west of the main hotel entrance. This is a shot from the back of the hotel from the second floor, give you an idea of transforming the, the property into something that you would have to travel hours to get to, but so close to where everyone lives and close to the metropolitan area. Again, this is another shot, give you an idea of the units, the tennis courts to the west, the pond to the north, and parking to the south. There's also covered parking under the hotel. This is a shot of, it shows the height and the location of the check-in, which is on the left side. The ballrooms are below grade from the main level, because the property slopes down toward the pond. Again, this is another shot showing the, to the west, the apartment house, multifamily apartment house, and to the southwest is the medical office building. This is the apartment house from the back. Similar architecture, all in a camp-style, Adirondack-style architecture, you know, consonant with the, where we are. And this is the section of the residential building. And this is the small, it's a, it's a two-wing medical wellness center for doctors and physicals and things like that. And this is the section of, of the medical building. This shows the hotel from Kingsfield. So as you can see, there's quite a bit of mature landscaping there already, and what, you know, our property pokes up just a little bit to the west. This is an overview of the back, bird's eye view of the back of the hotel. You can see Doral Greens up in the upper left-hand corner, and you can see the multifamily apartment house to the, to the right side.
Landscaping and all free.
Right. This is from the Doral Greens perspective. You can see that with additional landscaping, it'll be pretty much completely shielded. And this is the, the multifamily building as well.
This is the view from the emergency access.
From the emergency access of the hotel. Right. And this is the vision for Doral Greens to have meadows and to clean it up and make it a beautiful, beautiful, natural park-like environment.
Good evening, Mr. Mayor, members of the board. David Steinmetz from the Law Firm of Zarin. Steinmetz, I think Chris kinda summed up, and Jen certainly summed up, what I was going to address procedurally. So we would be delighted, Mr. Mayor, if the board would in fact declare your intent this evening to be lead agency, to start the secret process. We genuinely appreciate the fact that you have looked forward to advancing this process and scheduling the scoping session. Chris and Jen are right. We didn't want to spend two months debating whether or not you should issue a positive declaration and put us through the full secret process. Mr. Coen said, "I'm ready to do it. Let's get going," so we volunteered that, and we are ready to go. Happy to answer any questions, but we do not want to belabor. You will spend more, more than, more time with us than you wish over the coming months. So tonight we'll make it short and sweet, and we really appreciate, and, and as Charles said, we're looking forward to this. This is gonna be a great project for the village and for everyone involved.
Right. And having been through the EIS process with other applications to the village, I know that we will be spending a lot of time with you, but it also means that there's a lot of opportunity along the way for public comment and public input. There's a lot of time along the way for input from this board and other boards within the village. And I, I do like how in every picture, there's lots of trees and it's a sunny day. I know that that's not going to be the case at all times, but we're, but we're glad to see that. So I would open this up to question or comment from the board. Anybody?
I hope you're seeing them at the planning board also.
Yes, yes. And Trustee Heiser is, is the liaison to the planning board, so he will get the most of this out of anyone sitting here, I think, aside from Chris.
I guess I have one question. Do we have a name we can call it?
Yeah, we're still, yeah.
975 Anderson Hill.
I know. Repeat that?
Still working on trademarking the name.
Got it. Okay. Just, that's one question. And that's all I have for now.
Anybody else?
No.
I don't, I'm, I don't foresee opening up this to public comment. There will be, remember, we are setting a public hearing here for the scoping document. That will be a public hearing. It will be, it will be open to public comment as such for anybody who's interested in, you know, voicing thoughts on this. And I think we have a motion and a second.
Mayor, can I just ask one little, just a housekeeping question for David? The timeline for the scope is, right, so they submitted the scoping document with their application at the end of March. Under SEACR, there's a 60-day deadline for you to act on that scoping document. Otherwise, that draft becomes the final, without you even having to take action. So I had spoken to one of David's partners earlier today about...
We hereby extend to extending the deadline to adopt the scope.
Yeah, because otherwise, we're looking at comment on May 28th, and the ability to change anything will have passed us by potentially. So yeah, that's, thank you.
So we wish to preserve our right. Yeah, thank you.
Right, because I do foresee some changes coming out of the public hearing. Certainly, we've already started to receive staff comment on it, and we expect more comment from, from staff, from other boards, from this board as well.
And our consultants.
And the consultants, yes, and our consultants. And which there will be a lot of involvement from many consultants on this one. So it's, this is, again, this is really the first step where there are resolutions. Prior to this, it was really just conceptual. Now we're starting to get into the actual process, where this moves forward. And again, everything will be very transparent for the public to see and comment on. And there will be comment from this board as well.
And the scoping document, as we said, defines much of what, it's like, as Jennifer said, it's the index, almost like a table of contents for the EIS. So if somebody said, "Listen, I'm concerned about traffic," and that's an obvious one, everyone's gonna want traffic reviewed. So what happens is that part, the details and the traffic studies come as a result of that being defined in the scoping document, saying this needs to be studied as part of the, any impacts, environmental impacts as a result of any changes in traffic. So that's just one example, but obviously, there's a lot of other areas that are covered throughout. But that's just saying, if there's particular concerns that the board should consider, then that's, this is the time to do it, not later in the game.
Right. Good?
Yep.
All right, we have a motion and a second. Any other questions or comments from the board?
Trustee Epstein?
Yes.
Trustee Fisher?
Yes.
Trustee Heiser? Trustee Molino?
Yes.
Mayor Klein?
Yes, thank you. We look forward to starting the process. We look forward to involvement from the public, from our consultants, from the boards, as we go through this process. This will not be a short process. You know, this is, this'll take some time, but that's to make sure that we're getting it right, and that we're looking at every aspect that needs to be looked at from the village's standpoint. Because again, end of the day, the EIS is the village's document, and we want to make sure that we've, we've taken into consideration everything that we need to. Thank you. All right, moving on to Resolution Number Three. Consider a request for an exemption, extension of Chapter 158, Section 2.1 of the Village Code regarding a seasonal leaf blower ban for 975 Anderson Hill Road.
Whereas in April 2023, the Board of Trustees approved a local law creating a section of the Village Code enacting a seasonal gas-powered leaf blower ban from May 1st through September 30th, effective May 1st of this year, 2024. And whereas, under the Village Code, properties of five acres or more can apply to the village board for a full or partial exemption or extension of the local law. And whereas, an application has been distributed to known eligible properties in the Village of Rybrook, and also placed on the website. And whereas Representative 975 Anderson Hill Road submitted an application for an exemption of the requirements of the local law regarding a seasonal ban on gas-powered leaf, gas-powered leaf blowers, now therefore be resolved that after consideration of the intent of the local law, as well as the considerations raised in the application from representatives of 975 Anderson Hill Road, the Village of Rybrook hereby, and they'll decide whether to either deny, approve, or approve with conditions, the request for the exemption of the Village Code enacting a seasonal leaf blower ban for 975 Anderson Hill Road, and any conditions that the board may consider.
Thank you, Chris. Typically on these, we're waiting for a motion or second until we decide what we're doing. I believe we have representatives of the property if you'd like to make a comment.
Extraordinarily brief. It's a big piece of property. We don't have an extension court long enough. We would like the exemption so that we can indeed, on this piece of property, use a gas-powered leaf blower.
As a, as a quick question, I mean, we asked this of any application that's coming before us. What, where, I mean, this really is just covering, you know, the non-leaf season, so it's covering the, the summer, beginning in May, going through till, you know, end of September. What areas are the leaf blowers being, or the, the gas-powered blowers being used?
So, one would think, and, and, if you don't mind, go right ahead.
Into the microphone if you don't mind. Thank you.
I'm Morris Michaels, Vice President of Asset Management for Coen Brothers. The leaf blowers will primarily be used, the gas will be used away from residences in areas that will cause a disturbance. This is... And with Dom, we've worked out a hybrid plan. So like, in the areas furthest away from the homes, Dom will use his gas-powered equipment at partial throttle. As we get closer to the home sites and areas that are around walkways and things like that, that are easier to use the electric, Dom will transition over to the battery pack blowers. So the battery pack blowers, unfortunately, as advanced as they are, they're nowhere near as strong as a gas blower, even at partial throttle. So the idea is to keep the noise level down and the disturbance down with the vibrations from the engines. And then as he gets closer to residences within like 40 or 50 feet, he'll transition over to the electric so that the homeowners and that probably won't even be able to hear the gas blowers. And then he can use electric and rake, depending on where it makes most sense.
Morris, I think the mayor's question too is though, during demo and during construction, where, where at all are we going to be blowing?
Oh. Right, right. So, oh, I'm sorry.
There's a long series of card paths that go through the property that the residents use to get around. So as you cut, and... So as you're, you know, creating debris, debris from the lawn cutting, it gets onto the paths. The batteries last for a certain period of time, even with multiple battery packs in the trucks, but it's hard to get all the way around all the pathways with the, even with multiple extra batteries. And, you know, they charge, once they get hot, then they can't be recharged for that day, they have to cool down. once they get hot, then they can't be recharged for that day, they have to cool down, then recharge later, you know, after they cool down. So between the backpack, having the, we do have the electric equipment, but between the battery life, the multiple batteries, and just trying to keep the, you know, the pride that we take in trying to maintain the property where it should be.
Dom, let me just supplement. My understanding, Mr. Mayor, members of the board, you should all be aware, you apparently already adopted a partial or hybrid exemption for Doral Greens, so, for largely the same reasons as I understand it.
Right. And, and that's why...
So we're just trying to make sure that, that Mr. Cohen and our team do not have a violation in light of what Dom is explaining.
Right. And, and, and again, you know, the, the way that the legislation was drafted is that it does allow for these exemptions and extensions for the larger properties with the understanding of, you know, the fact that it is a lot more that has to go on with those. And, and I think, you know, if I'm hearing this correctly, it sounds like there's already a percentage where there's, the intention is for a certain percentage of this to be done with electric. So you're already starting to convert over to some electric. You know, the, we, you know, I would also say that the intention of the legislation isn't just noise, it's also emissions, that these are major polluters to the environment. And so we're just trying to do our part as a village. And also, the intention of the legislation is there, is for there to be a migration to the point where it does become fully electric with the understanding that technology takes some time. But we're not the first to do this. A lot of other municipalities, and I can, I can probably ask questions that get asked every time, you know, are you doing business in other municipalities that have these bans in place?
Many. And some are having it, some don't have it. Then we get the exemptions in some areas, depending on the size of the property and their tax district stuff, I guess affects if they're allowed to use it or not. But we do, we are, you know, we had to move towards that because it was mandatory, and we're trying with the equipment that's available at this time. And just hopefully, at some point, it does get better to help the industry do better, so you don't have to go through the exemption.
Right. And again, the legislation really just covers the non-leaf season. We understand that, you know, and it was kind of a compromise during our process with this legislation to allow for gas-powered leaf blowers during the spring cleanup and during the leaf season. Do you have questions or comments from the board?
No questions.
I have a question. So how many electric leaf blowers or electric lawn equipment do you currently have?
We generally have three to five units in each, each crew.
Okay. So is that how many you would bring when you...
I have probably like 20 batteries to accompany those, those three to five units.
Okay.
And then, even now, we're based out of Norwalk, and because of this battery issue, they're almost going to make it, they're starting to think towards mandatory, having to do an enclosure on our property to protect the batteries in case they... We're trying our best with what's available.
Yeah, no.
Just the life of the battery is just not efficient on a big piece of property yet.
Right. And I guess my other question is, so it sounds like you really are taking measures to, you know, meet us and support our, you know, law. Would this be just, would you just be doing this during the seasonal ban, or would you be doing this all year round, you know?
The electric units are in the trucks year-round.
Okay.
You know, so we try to, the neighbors, even, I mean, we don't want to strap those things on with the law and noise either, but it's, it's something that helps us do our job properly. Because we're, we're three generations landscape business, and this is what we do. Take a lot of pride in what we do. The properties that we take care of, thank God for these people that, you know, have these homes that let us do this type of work. And it just makes it, it's like a cleaning person or something. You can't do the right job with what they have right now. But we're trying our best.
Right. So I have one thing to say.
Yeah, please.
So you did, you did say that you don't use them near the homes with full throttle. So that's something that we definitely want to make sure of.
Yeah, I was going to say, I was going to say, I think, I, I think, you know, just knowing how we've done things in the past, I think we probably can move forward with an exemption extension along the lines of the conditions outlined in the presentation.
Understood, understood.
And I understood...
I don't know how to properly put that into writing, Chris. I'll leave that to you.
I'd like to clarify one thing. So the, we talked about a, battery-powered leaf blowers would be used within 50 feet of the residences. And I heard about the partial throttle, but I wasn't clear on where the partial throttle would be applied.
Which was a good suggestion. It just would help.
In what locations?
In the larger, in the larger open areas away from the...
The other locations. Okay.
Away from residences. That's our goal. Right.
So Mayor, you want me to read that summary?
Yeah, can you read the summary, please, Chris?
Sure. So that would be, "The Village of Rybrook Board of Trustees hereby approves with conditions the request for an exemption from the Village Code of the leaf blower law." And the conditions are as follows. The approved conditions are that battery-powered leaf blowers would be used within 50 feet of the residences. And in other areas, the leaf blowers would be used at partial throttle. The gas-powered leaf blowers would be used at partial throttle. And the exemption shall be through October 1st of what year for the board? It's either one or two years.
One year.
Okay, so one year would be through October 1st.
Because we don't know how the battery is going to change anything.
So the, that means October 1st, 2024, which will then give you the time from October to next May to apply again if you need it.
Yeah. Can I have a motion and second, please?
So moved.
Second.
Questions or comments? Sound acceptable?
Acceptable.
Good.
Thank you.
All right.
Thank you all.
We haven't voted on it yet.
Oh.
Trustee Epstein?
Yes.
Trustee Fisher?
Yes.
Trustee Heiser?
Yes.
Trustee Molino?
Yes.
And Mayor Klein?
Yes, thank you.
There we go. Thank you.
All right, see you then. Resolution number four, considering a request for an exemption extension of Chapter 158, Section 2.1 of the Village Code regarding a seasonal leafblower ban for Bofamonte Landscaping.
Okay, I'm just going to move, if you don't mind, to the resolved.
Please.
It's the same, it's the same whereas as the prior resolution, now therefore be resolved after consideration of the intent of the local law, as well as the consideration raised by the application from representatives of Bofamonte Landscaping. The Village of Rybrook Board of Trustees hereby either denies, approves, or approves with conditions the request for an exemption of the Village Code enacting a seasonal leaf blower ban for Bofamonte Landscaping.
Thank you, Chris. And again, we'll hold off on the motion in a second until we have, I believe we have representatives from Bofamonte. Please.
Good evening, everyone. My name is Anthony Bofamonte, A. Bofamonte Landscaping. Our situation's a little unique to just the regular landscaping practice. We operate the compost facility here in town and run very large equipment that's processing material, which is flammable if it gets close enough to the operating units of our machinery. So our gas blowers really clean off machinery and just keep them safe, you know, so they don't, you know, ignite. There's leaves that we grind. There's a lot of yard waste that we grind on site. So we're using our gas blowers 90% of the time just for that, and it's only a couple of times a day. We're not mowing lawns from morning to night, some of the other applicants. But we do also maintain the little community park outside of the compost facility where we maintain it on a weekly basis, and use it minimum up to, I mean, I would say maximum like 15, 20 minutes a week, just to clean that little area. And it's really during the leaf season, during the year, we cut the grass with bags, so there's no gas blowers going. But it's really, we would need the exemption just to keep our equipment sort of safe and clean, you know, every, every day. It's not like a seasonal thing. It's, it's year-round.
Gotcha. And, and I guess, I guess I have two questions. So it sounds like really the bulk of the, the use of these are really just for the equipment.
Yes.
Is that, is, are there, I mean, I know there's a lot of requirements for maintaining a compost facility.
Yes.
Is that one of the requirements?
Keeping our equipment safe.
I mean, well, I know keeping it safe, but I...
It's just common practice.
Is there anything written into...
There's nothing written in a DEC or any state agency to keep your machinery...
The means, means and methods is probably up to the contractor.
It's means and methods of the operation.
Right, means and methods. All right.
It would be determined by the local agency.
Correct.
Right.
And just for the public so they're clear, this is on Village of Rybrook property on Upper Lincoln Avenue.
Correct.
Right, which is leased out, right.
Where nobody lives near the facility. And quite frankly, the noise coming from the airport, the noise coming from the airport is much louder.
I have, I have one other question, just wondering whether you'd be willing to consider purchasing a small electric one just to use in the, just to use in the park area.
So our, our core business is landscaping. I have multiple contracts and accounts that sometimes it is mandatory, totally non-efficient. If you're saying you want us to use it just in the park area, no problem. It's very, very easy. Just in the park area, outside the gate.
Just the park area.
Everything outside the gate, we'll, we'll use, we'll use the...
And that's also consistent with what we do in our parks. We use the electric.
Right, that's why I was asking.
Sure. Yeah, we keep units there. We have power on the place at the, we have an office trailer. We could charge our batteries. Everything outside of the gates, we'll use, we'll use battery.
Great.
Can I, can I ask a question? And it's really not directed to you. In, in looking at the resolution, it's to the company, but why isn't it to the compost site, the exemption?
Do you have clients in Rybrook?
No, that's a good, that's, that's a good question.
We can, we can make it clear that it's for...
Theoretically, I mean, and I am engaging theoretically, if you, if you were doing landscaping in my house, you could have, you could use this exemption.
Michael, do you know the address?
You're providing the loophole.
311.
311 Lincoln Avenue? So we'll add in a 311 Lincoln Avenue.
Yeah, just...
Yeah, yeah, good call.
That's why he's a...
Are you a lawyer?
Not anymore.
Not anymore.
He just plays one on TV.
He's still a lawyer.
No, I have given up my license. I, I am basically nothing.
All right, so I...
You want me to summarize it, Mayor?
Please.
Okay. So the last whereas it's going to, and now end, that the application for the requirement, was submitted for the requirements of the local law regarding a seasonal ban on gas-powered leaf blowers at 311 Lincoln Avenue. And also, we're going to now say that approves with conditions the request for an exemption for what period, Mayor? Or Board?
I mean, I feel like this one.
I kind of feel like...
Yeah.
Because it's essential to the operations.
Yeah, it's been two years.
Let's do two.
Okay, so October 1st, 2025, and the condition is that the, and the condition is that the electric-powered leaf blowers would be used on the Village Park property outside of 311 Lincoln Avenue, as well as anywhere outside the gate.
Okay. It would be battery-operated, not electric.
Battery-operated, yes.
Good?
Plug it in.
Yes.
Is there a difference?
All right. Can I have a motion and second, please?
Don't move.
Second.
Is there a difference between battery-operated and electric?
I guess, electric, you mean plug-in, battery, you mean? It's a battery-operated electric.
We have an extension cord. Battery is, the battery is the...
Not gas-powered.
Got it. Thank you.
Good? Questions, comments?
None.
All right.
Trustee Epstein?
Yes.
Trustee Fisher?
Yes.
Trustee Heiser?
Yes.
Trustee Molino?
Yes.
Mayor Klein?
Yes, thank you.
Thank you very much for your time.
Thank you.
We don't see, we don't see Anthony Bofamonte here much, but so, just want to say, he does a great job up at our compost site. You know, he's been a great operator for us. We have, we do have a contract with them and, and does a lot of activity out of that site and keeps a nice, clean site.
It's going, it's going very well.
Good, that's good to hear.
Have a good night. Thank you very much.
Thank you.
Now that we've completely cleared the room...
I know.
They're all here for the budget. That's what, they're not here for that, huh?
Sorry, Chris.
Michael, wouldn't you like to have a first-row seat?
Where's your entourage, Michael?
So...
Where's his entourage?
Resolution number one, considering adoption of the fiscal year 2425 budget.
Would anybody like me to do the presentation again?
No.
No.
Give us a one-liner.
You changed the colors of the crap.
Give us a one-liner.
I want you to show, I want you to show the pie chart again.
Yeah, that's it.
Showing what percentage of people's taxes are the, are the village, are from this village budget.
Yes.
And I'd like you to re-show the slide that shows that the average homeowner, the average, you know, taxes are only going to go up, I think, 180, 156 dollars, something like that.
Something like that.
I would also like to see the homestead versus non-homestead proportions to six decimal places.
Not 12?
We could probably arrange that. We could arrange that.
Six decimal places is sufficient.
All right.
Okay, so here we go. Considering the adoption of the Village of Rybrook 202425 annual budget, whereas the village administrator filed the tentative budget on March 20th, and two budget work sessions were held on April 1st and April 8th, and the Board of Trustees held a public hearing on April 9th pursuant to the notice of public hearing, at which time any members of the public were given opportunity to be heard, and the hearing was also closed at that time. And whereas on January 25th, 2005, the Board of Trustees adopted a local law allowing for homestead base proportions. And whereas on March 12th, 2024, the Board of Trustees, the Town of Ry adopted a resolution establishing the base proportions. And whereas the, on March 14th, 2024, the Board of Trustees of the Village of Rybrook also adopted a resolution concurring with the Town of Ry and establishing the base proportions of 78, and I won't go through the decimal points, but basically 78.78% for homestead properties and 21.21 for non-homestead properties for the purposes of the tax levy of the village. And whereas the total taxable assessed value for the village tax purposes is three, wow, the assessed value is $3,518,268,581. And based upon the amendment to the Village of Rybrook, Village Board, and discussed it, the work sessions and hearing would result in a homestead tax rate of 5.0632 and a non-homestead tax rate of 8.3346 per thousand of assessed valuation. That's a blended tax rate of 5.5231. And whereas the Board of Trustees authorizes the receiver taxes to collect the property taxes necessary to raise the required $19,431,581 tax levy based upon the most updated assessment rule provided by the assessor, now therefore be resolved that the Board of Trustees makes the following amendments to the tentative budget, which are hereby adopted. And then there's a summary of the changes that were made at the work session. There were two work sessions. And whereas, and be further resolved, the tentative budget as herein after set forth and amended by the Board of Trustees is hereby adopted as the annual budget, the Village of Rybrook, for the fiscal year beginning June 1st, 2024. Be it further resolved that the capital projects identified in the 202425 adopted budget are hereby established and funded in the total amount of $2,365,900. Be it further resolved, the amounts listed therein for payment of principal and interest and indebtedness, and that maintenance account charges identified in the budget be paid, and the salaries, wages, benefits, and other terms and conditions for all employees, including those not represented by a bargaining unit, shall be paid such salaries and benefits as been determined by the Board of Trustees. And be it further resolved, the Board does hereby authorize the tax levy for the sum of $19,431,581 for general capital and special maintenance account funds, which based upon the Town of Ry assessment rule for the village, and applying the approved homestead base proportions to determine the tax rates would result in a homestead tax rate of 5.0632 and a non-homestead tax rate of 8.3346 per thousand of assessed valuation.
Thank you, Chris. Can I have a motion and second, please?
So moved.
Second.
I already said it, but I'm going to say it again. You know, thank you, Chris. Thank you to the department heads and Trish Lawrence, everyone who put so much work into this budget. I don't think people understand the process, how difficult it is to maintain this at such a high level, where the budget's right on target every year. Like I said, low fiscal stress, our audits come back clean every year, and that's because of the work that goes in from beginning to end and throughout the year of seeing this through. It makes life for us up here very easy, and we are unbelievably appreciative for it. You know, and, and like I said earlier, this is a budget that maintains the level of service that the village, that the residents of the Village of Rybrook have come to expect, and adds back one position that's essential, and adds another police position. And, you know, we sit here, we'd love to add more. We'd love to be able to, to continue to grow this, but we also have to look out for the residents of the village and, and the finances. So I think this is a very balanced approach to a budget, excuse me, a conservative approach, but something that works. Questions or comments?
I would just like to extend, Jason, your thank yous, not simply to Chris and Trish and Lawrence, Greg, not simply to the department heads, but to every employee who basically has to help the department heads. They can't do it on their own. So thank you to every employee who's working for the Village of Rybrook. You collectively make this village a success.
I would like to say we have great teamwork. It takes a team, it takes a village. It takes a team to make a village. And we're lucky to have everybody on our team, including everybody in this room. So thank you, and those not, not here too. those not here tonight as well. It's a great effort.
If you choke, I'm not prepared to become-
And the- And Mayor, if I could just add, you know, the teamwork starts because you, the Board gives the trust to us, which we take seriously. You set the tone from the top, from the Village Board. We appreciate what you allow us to do. You know, there's a lot of good, hard-working employees here that really want to do our best, and, but that tone is set from all the Village Board members who provide support to us day in and day out. The other thing I just want to mention briefly, it's the second year we've done our transparency program. You know, a lot of places just put up a flat PDF on their website, and most people don't understand what that budget means or reads, or things are, I won't say hidden in there, but they're hard to find sometimes. Ours is meant to be extremely transparent for the residents. We're trying really hard to make the process one that, you know, a little bit more interactive, and if you want the information, we want it to be at the fingertips, not have to really dig for it.
Yeah.
Hopefully, we're working towards that, and, you know, we think the open, the online budgeting process has been really interesting process to go through after we've done it another way for all these decades. So hopefully the residents see some value and kind of bring it out in a different way.
That's it, ditto.
Thank you.
Thank you, Chris. All right, I believe we have a motion in second already?
Trustee Epstein?
Yes.
Trustee Fisher?
Yes.
Trustee Heiser?
Yes.
Trustee Morino?
Yes.
And Mayor Klein?
Yes, thank you. Another budget here in the blogs.
Another one down.
On time, excuse me, undertakes cap. And even though we don't have to be, but I won't get in there. All right, I'm moving.
So I can burn all my proposed budget documents?
Recycle them.
Recycle, that's what I meant to say, of course.
All right, resolution number five, considering the authorization of funds for the 2024 Memorial Day and Veterans Day ceremonies to be paid to the American Legion.
Whereas the American Legion will host the 2024 Memorial Day Ceremony on May 26th, and whereas the Board of Trustees would like to assist the American Legion with this event, and therefore be resolved that the Village of Rybrook will pay $1,500 to the American Legion for its 2024 Memorial Day Ceremony and any potential 2024 Veterans Day Ceremony.
Thank you, Chris. Can I have a motion in second, please?
I'm moved.
Second.
And I would point out that this is the same amount that was, has been given in years past, or at least last year.
Is it a total, that's the?
Total.
Total.
Yes.
Yeah, we give the one amount for both events.
Yeah, for both.
I'm sorry, repeat that?
It's not, it's not for each, that's a total amount-
They can use it any way they want.
Divvied up as they see fit.
Yeah.
Great, perfect.
It's 1,500, not 3,000.
Yes. Any questions or any other questions or comments?
No.
Trustee Epstein?
Yes.
Trustee Fisher?
Yes.
Trustee Heiser?
Yes.
Trustee Morino?
Yes.
Mayor Klein?
Yes, thank you. Resolution number six, considering appointing a representative to the Community Development Advisory Group, CDAG.
Whereas the CDAG provides guidance to the County Executive's Office on various programs and priorities submitted by various municipalities through the Community Development Block Grant Program, the Emergency Solutions Center Grant, and the Home Investment Partnership Programs for the Westchester County Urban County Consortium. And whereas the CDAG consists of members appointed by the various participating municipalities, including the Village of Rybrook, and whereas the Village of Rybrook seeks to appoint a representative to CDAG to allow for Rybrook's participation in the CDBG, ESG, and Home Investment Partnership Opportunities, a lot of acronyms, and whereas the Village of Rybrook seeks to appoint former Mayor Paul Rosenberg as the CDAG representative for the village, now therefore be resolved that the Board of Trustees hereby appoints Paul Rosenberg as the CDAG representative for the Village of Rybrook.
Thank you, Chris. Can I have a motion in second, please?
I'm moved.
Second.
And I want to say thank you to former Mayor Rosenberg for being willing to do this, we greatly appreciate it. Former Mayor Feinstein also volunteered to do this, but Paul responded first, and so I let them decide who was going to do it, and it was decided that former Mayor Rosenberg was going to be the CDAG representative. But we thank them both for their prior service and being willing to take on this role. Any questions or comments?
Nope.
Trustee Epstein?
Yes, thank you.
Trustee Fisher?
Yes.
Trustee Heiser?
Thank you, Paul. Yes.
Trustee Morino?
Yes.
And Mayor Klein?
Yes, thank you. Resolution number seven, considering an appointment to the Sustainability Committee.
Now therefore be resolved that Jeremy Shi of Nine Old Oak Road is hereby appointed to the Sustainability Committee for the term ending on the first Monday of April 2025.
Thank you, Chris. Can I have a motion in second, please?
I'm moved.
Second.
Any que, well, we are very thankful to Jeremy for joining this club. I know we have had representation in the past from the Roots and Shoots Club, and unfortunately, that student is graduating. Well, fortunately, fortunately for them, our loss, but we're, we're very excited to see her go on to bigger and better things, and we're very excited to have another student joining, joining the Sustainability Committee. It's always great to have that perspective. And the Roots and Shoots Club does work for us, volunteer, with us, with us, with us in Harkness Park, so-
And also cleanup days and things like that, too.
And the cleanup days, right, so-
And plantings, right?
Yeah.
So we thank Jeremy for being willing to volunteer his time. Any other questions or comments?
Trustee Epstein?
Yes.
Trustee Fisher?
Yes.
Trustee Heiser?
Yes.
Trustee Morino?
Yes.
Mayor Klein?
Yes, thank you. Resolution number eight, considering the submission of a request for a pension waiver pursuant to Section 211 in New York State Retirement and Social, I think?
Social Security law.
Securities law. I'm reading that, that doesn't look right, for the appointment of a fire training officer part-time.
Yep, and this is an add-on resolution, whereas there's a need for a fire training officer part-time for the continued safety of firefighters for the Village of Rybrook Fire Department, and whereas the Village has advertised the position and no qualified non-retirees express an interest in the position, and whereas Captain, retiree Captain Richard Dempsey has coordinated the training program for the Rybrook firefighters for several years and is interested in the position of fire training officer part-time, and whereas, in order to be appointed by the Village of Rybrook as a fire training officer part-time, Captain Dempsey would need a waiver pursuant to Section 211 of the New York State Retirement and Social Securities Law. And therefore be resolved that the Village of Rybrook Board of Trustees hereby approves the submittal of a Section 211 application for a pension waiver pursuant to 211 of the New York State Retirement and Social Securities Law, and be it further resolved, the mayor and administrator authorized to sign any documents necessary or appropriate for the consideration of this request for a 211 waiver.
Thank you, Chris. Can I have a motion in second?
I'm moved.
Second.
Does this need to be further approved beyond our board?
No, yeah, it has to be approved by the state. This is the application that goes to the state. The position's already authorized by Westchester County, and the funding for it is already in our budget.
Okay. All right. All right. Hopefully that gets passed through and-
Yes, in a timely manner.
In a timely manner, yes. We would appreciate it if the state were to approve this in a timely manner so that we can continue with our training operations.
A little clarification, you know, they, he's provided training for us in the past several years as well, many years, but that's, it was never an issue because New York State has, had waived since COVID, and all they've been waiving the income limits for retirees. Now they're reinstating, I think it was of June, I believe, they're reinstating the income limits, which is 35,000. Not that he gets that from us, he does not, but he also works as a training officer for the county, so he's got to do the same thing with the county. So he, he works at the Fire Academy, so in order to continue with us, you know, when it gets re, the income limits get reinstated for retirees, he needs the waiver in order to continue to provide it for us. It's under 15,000 what he receives from us on our training program.
Great. Any other questions or comments? No, understood.
Trustee Epstein?
Yes.
Trustee Fisher?
Yes.
Trustee Heiser?
Yes.
Trustee Morino?
Yes.
Mayor Klein?
Yes, thank you. I noticed we don't have any resolutions, I didn't even notice that, I don't know how I didn't notice that for accepting minutes, but we don't have any of those. Administrators' report.
Okay, so a few items I want to mention. The Rybrook 5K Fit Walk is going to be on May 4th, 4th, from 9:00 to 11:00 a.m., so we encourage people to sign up in advance if possible. While it's not required to sign up in advance, we prefer it so that we can make sure, you know, we can anticipate, you know, how many people need to be there, and we have plenty of giveaways also for the event, and so Trustee Epstein has done a great job, as always, getting people rallied up to come.
I hope I can count on all of you to be there?
Yep.
Okay.
And a beautiful, we'll count on a beautiful day, too.
I hope it's a day like today.
Yes. May 1st is the seasonal ban on gas-powered leaf blowers, so for the public, that's next week. So just a reminder, it's coming up that the, after that, you have to then start, you can no longer use gas-powered leaf blowers. New York State budget is now been adopted, and there's a good news, bad news, for the first time ever in 15 years, I think it is? Yeah, I think 15 years, there was a $50 million increase statewide in unrestricted aid for villages, towns, and cities. That sounds wonderful, you know, that hasn't been raised in all those years. While that sounds wonderful, it amounts to $3,000 for us.
Oh my God.
3,171. Depending if you're a city or a village or a town, some of our neighboring communities got 140,000 because they're, they're a city, and cities, we just don't get that as villages. And it's, it's per capita state aid, but yeah, so it's not, we currently receive about 45,000 a year in that, in that particular form of aid. This is a temporary, I guess, meaning one-time additional payment of $3,000, so, yeah, that wasn't really moving the dial.
That really changed our budget.
Mine would say it's better than a sharp stick to the eye.
That's right.
Yes.
And we had another successful seed swap event last Saturday, last Saturday, and also a really nice turnout for the Little League Parade. So, you know, they both had good turnouts, a lot of happy people at the Little League Parade, you know, I was able to go to that, and the Bubble Bus was a big hit.
I saw them loading up the bubble thing.
And, you know, Recreation, Parks and Recreation did a great job, and Public Works, but there was just so many happy people there, it was really fun to see, because we haven't done that event in a number, in several years now, since pre-COVID.